Good evening. I'm going to call the Special Board of Alderman meeting to order on Thursday, February 6, 2020 at 7:05 PM here at Nashville High North, Room B166. Tonight's prayer will be offered by City Clerk Sue Lovering, and Alderman Ben Clemens will lead us in the Pledge to the Flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Phyllis O-
Mike.
Thank you. Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Phyllis, oh God, with a spirit of unity and understanding, which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with a justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens, so help us, God.
Amen.
Alderman Clemens.
Pledge allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before I ask the clerk to call the roll, just, I want to thank you all. You know that the Aldermanic Chamber is undergoing some renovations, and they were, you know, kind enough to allow us to use this space this evening. The thing about these microphones that are different than ours is you have to actually turn it on when you speak, so I just wanted to make sure that was clear to everyone. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Thank you. Alderman O'Brien.
Present.
Alderman Clemens.
Here.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Here.
Alderman Laws.
Here.
Alderman Tenza.
Present.
Alderman Schmidt.
Here.
Alderman Dowd.
Present.
Alderman Klee.
Here.
Alderman Lopez. Alderman Jettie.
Here.
Alderman Lou.
Here.
Alderman Karen.
Here.
Alderman Cleaver.
Here.
Alderman Harry Gathright.
Here.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Here.
We have 14 in attendance.
And Alderman Lopez was unable to join us this evening. Tonight also with us is Mayor Jim Donches and Director Cummings. I will turn the meeting over to the mayor to give us a little briefing on this public hearing. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you for everyone for coming tonight to talk about this Performing Arts Center project. And I see a couple of my former colleagues here. I'd like to welcome them, and it's great to see them. So, Madam President, I thought what I would do is take a few moments to talk about what this project is all about and how we've gotten here, and then turn it over to Tim Cummings, the Director of Economic Development, to give a little more detail, and I think then Deb Novotny, who's been involved with fundraising, is going to address you as well. So I think the basic question that sometimes people ask is, why are we doing this project? And the real reason is that we are trying to build, and we are building, a stronger, healthier economy for the city of Nashville. And that's our fundamental goal, and that benefits everyone. If we look at some of the, our neighboring cities in New Hampshire, all have performing arts centers. And I'll focus for the moment on Keene, Manchester, and Concord. So Keene is, of course, a much smaller city, a quarter of our size, 50 miles to the west. They have the advantage of the fact that they have a traditional theater, the Colonial Theater, which was renovated some years ago, but they're now investing a lot more money in expanding it and enhancing it. And if you look at what their objectives are for a theater now they've been operating for some years, they put it on their website. They say the Colonial Theater is the Monadnock Region's preeminent performing arts center and a key component in the economic engine of downtown Keene and the surrounding area. Now, they've been, again, operating this theater for a number of years. And they go on to say that when they're, when all of these renovations and enhancements are completed, it will serve an additional 10,000 clients and will bring 60,000 patrons annually to downtown Keene, and they say greatly enhancing the cultural appeal of the Monadnock Region. If you look in Concord, the same thing is happening. There is the Colonial Theater, which was an older theater that was renovated some years ago. They've had great success with that in terms of building a stronger economy for, more healthy economy for Concord. Because they, in the last couple of years, the Colonial Theater acquired a smaller theater and renovated that, so now they have two performance spaces because they feel that it has done so much for their downtown. Same thing in Manchester. In Manchester, there is the Palace Theater on Hanover Street. Years ago, that was struggling. It was revived, renovated, and has been, a lot of work has been done on it. And within the last year or so, the Palace Theater acquired yet another smaller theater in order to enhance the effect which the palace has for the city of Manchester. And in Manchester, the main Palace Theater brings 140,000 people to Hanover Street every year, spending millions and millions of dollars in the downtown. Now, the reason that the theater like this helps to build a more healthy economy is that everything that we're doing downtown works together to enhance business activity and build a thriving downtown community, which is important to the entire city. We have Paul Shea here from Great American Downtown. He's done a great job in bringing new events, new excitement, new activities, but we are working on the riverfront, trying to, we're going to be enhancing riverfront with walkways and lighting in order to use the riverfront and the beauty of this natural asset for the benefit of everyone. Also, we are, we've brought 500 units of downtown housing in the last few years near to Main Street, or at least in the downtown area. Now, why do I say that this stronger downtown economy benefits everyone? Because if you look at the downtown, the small area, a quarter mile, quarter square mile out of 30-some square miles, so less than 1% of the area of the city, if you look at the downtown area, the quarter mile that is Main Street and kind of the Mill Yard, that area generates $6 million of tax revenue for the entire city, yet requires very few services. I mean, in that downtown area, we don't even do garbage pickup, it's all commercial, very school, very few schoolchildren, which is the most expensive of our services, and of course, we have the typical, the normal police and fire protection. But overall, there is no way we spent close to $6 million in the downtown area. Just in the, in the last few years, these three projects that have come in, Riverfront Landing, Loft 34, and the Marshall Street Apartments, once Marshall Street is fully in the tax base, those three projects will pay $1.3 million to the city, which is far more than the Performing Arts Center will ever cost in a year for all the debt service that's involved. So if we can use the, all of these projects together, the Performing Arts Center, all of the activity it will generate to boost the downtown, the amount of downtown business activity, raise the property values, and strengthen the economy downtown, it benefits everyone because if that $6 million becomes nine, becomes 12 million dollars collected from that quarter square mile, it helps us pay for schools like this one, it helps us pay for fire and police services all across the city. And it provides a cultural experience for our citizens and for those in the region that currently does not exist. So we are not reinventing the wheel here. This has been a highly successful strategy in communities smaller than ours. Again, Concord is about half the size, Keene is a quarter of the size, very close by. And the project, I think you will learn, is very well thought out. We have a very good operator, and I will tell you, I will sort of, because some people have been asking about sort of the progress and the changes that have occurred over time, so I thought I would take a couple of minutes in addition, if you don't mind, Madam President, to kind of just trace some of that. So this, this particular Performing Arts Center project, now, there were, this has been looked at for decades in Nashville, but this particular project began with a feasibility study done by Duncan Webb from New York City. And that occurred over a period of a couple of years. The city guided that project. It started before I was mayor, and it, I think it was completed maybe at the beginning, right at the beginning of when I was in office. He guided in the sense that we really asked him to develop a project that would be a performing arts center on the, or study the feasibility of a performing arts center that was on the second floor above retail somewhere in the downtown. And he looked at the market and determined that a performing arts center was financially feasible and suggested that we should have a theater of about 500 seats. That feasibility study was completed sometime in 2017 or '16, and then the city moved forward to consider whether we should do the project. And there was a vote of the Board of Aldermen that did not pass on a very narrow, very, very close, but it didn't pass. Then it went on the ballot, and it passed the voters. Then it was authorized by the Board of Aldermen, I think, two years ago in February of 2018. So we had bonding authorization for a project with a feasibility study but no design. And in the course of that feasibility study, the idea was arrived at to do this at Alex Shoes, which was a very central, main corner in downtown. So the, we went about this thoughtfully, methodically, very publicly. We formed, the city formed a steering committee of a group of people, some members of the Board of Aldermen, a lot of members of the community. All of their meetings have always been public, and I think they're on film, I think you can see them on the, on the city website or YouTube with a link. So if you really wanted to see everything that's happened, you could go through the entire history of the steering committee, which has met many times over the period of, of, of the last couple of years. The steering committee formed a fundraising subcommittee to try to raise money for the project because back in 2017, when this was voted on, there was a condition placed on that the city raised some outside money, $4 million. So there needed to be a, a fundraising committee, but the city had never raised money in that manner before. So the fundraising committee, the steering committee recommended that we engage a professional fundraiser. And so they went out with an RFP, a Request for Proposal, to decide who to hire as the fundraiser. And after getting, I'm not sure how many proposals because I was not directly involved in making that, that choice, but they engaged Betsy McNamara, who had successfully conducted a number of fundraising efforts around New Hampshire, but also right here in Nashville, for the Soup Kitchen, where they raised some millions of dollars, as well as the Y. She's done work in Concord and elsewhere in New Hampshire. In addition, but, and she recommended, look, we gotta, we need to look in more depth to see how much money we can raise, and so we need to do a finance, we need to do a feasibility study as to how much really can be raised realistically in Nashville. So the time was taken to thoroughly look at the issue of how much money could be raised. That feasibility study regarding the raising of the money was completed sometime in maybe the early fall of 2018, somewhere in there, and she, she and the feasibility suggested that the city could privately raise $2.5 million, which became the goal of the fundraising effort. In addition, the city began to explore the possibility of new market tax credits, which is a federal program that has been used successfully around New Hampshire many times. And the way it, there's quite, it's very highly technical, but basically you get an allocation of these new market tax credits, and when you do, you can sell those to realize funds to contribute to a publicly oriented project. So we also got a consultant who is an expert in new market tax credits and, and began to apply to get, bring in, in addition to the $2.5 million, an additional $4 million in new market tax credits. In a parallel way, the steering committee began to look at, well, what, you know, we need to have someone design the project. We've got this, just this concept, but there's no design. We don't know at all what it would look like exactly. So early, so in 2018, the steering committee, in addition to all the other things we've discussed, put out a Request for Proposal for architects to design a Nashville Performing Arts Center. I think about six or maybe more applied, very nationally recognized architects, New York City, Boston, people who'd done this kind of work before, very skilled, and they, so all of those people were interviewed, and they all had proposals. Again, these are all public meetings, and I think Mr. Tebowom attended quite a few of them, or all of them, he was very, very, very diligent. And I think Hill and everyone will agree, these were highly qualified people, and at the end of the day, the steering committee chose a design team led by Icon, which is an architectural firm in Boston. But one thing that was very persuasive to the steering committee, that they, Icon presented, and others on the steering committee had made the same point. This thing is not going to be successful if it's on the second floor, and it needs to be bigger than 500 seats. On the second floor, it's not good for the audience, it's not good for the performers, it needs to be on the first floor. And so the steering committee, following the thoughts of Icon, moved the performance space to the first floor. Again, the architects and the design team suggested it should be 750 seats. But in addition to that, and a lot of this is all happening at the same time, so I apologize for going back and forth in time, but at the same time these other things are occurring, the city was looking for an operator who could professionally operate a theater in a commercial way that would be successful for the city, so we wouldn't have to constantly subsidize it. And the operator who was, who responded and who was located and ultimately engaged was Peter Lally of Spectacle, of Spectacle Management, who operates other theaters in New England, Lowell, Lexington, The Cape, and who knows the business of commercial performances and performance centers very well. And he made the point, this should be, you can make this work, and in fact, I, Peter Lally and my company can make this work requiring no subsidy from the city whatsoever if you make it 750 seats. So during this process of the design, that's going on, the fundraising efforts are sort of being organized, Peter Lally comes in and the, and the steering committee elects to go forward with Icon with a 750-seat theater on the first floor at the Alex location. Now, in the, but it, but as we, as we, the fundraising, now, there was also a fundraising committee formed, not city, not city people really, of private sector actors, people, business people and the like, who would raise money. But they, and in working together with the fundraising consultant, Betsy McNamara, and after doing this feasibility study, said, if you want to try to raise significant amount of money to help the Performing Arts Center, you need an actual design. You can't just have a concept. You need to show people, if you want someone to give $250,000, you got to show people what they're contributing to. So, or 250,000, or 500,000, or a million, or whatever the number is, you've got to show people what you're, what they're contributing to. So after Icon was engaged, then they needed to design the center. So they moved forward to do an actual design, and there were many, many meetings of the steering committee. Again, Mr. Tebowom was there and I think was very up on things. That was developed, and the, the design that you see here was not arrived at, because this whole thing, as you can see, a very involved process, was not arrived at till the middle of 2019, and it was only then that the fundraising actually began. That's kind of where we are. I know people have been, I get it, that people are, and I think Mr. Cummings and Ms. Novotny can address this to some degree, are somewhat frustrated, and as am I, that, well, we don't know how much has been raised, but we know it's quite a bit already. And we hear from Ms., from the fundraising committee that they want to reach a fairly high proportion of the total goal before they really announce that they've reached that and kind of go out to the public for smaller donations. But we already see that there is quite a bit of momentum behind this. There was 300 and some thousand from a state tax credit program, there was 250,000 from the bank, a Bank of America, a bank that really knows what, you know, very engaged across the country, who has confidence in this community and in this project. They wouldn't put this kind of money into this if they, if it weren't the case. $250,000 last week. One of our more local banks, Enterprise Bank, announced this week $100,000 contribution. Every member of the, of the steering committee, I believe, has made a contribution and a commitment, and there are others that I'm sure we will learn about without, before it too long passes, when they reach whatever level they want to reach before they announce that they're, you know, whatever percentage it is, they're through to the goal. The only other thing that has happened is that the new market tax credit application was not successful because the, and I know this gets kind of involved, but since you're all here. The CDE that we are working with most carefully did not get an allocation from Treasury. So the way this thing works, the way the new market tax credits work, is that the Treasury allo, the CDE means Community Development Entity, that's what they're called, under this, under the regulations. And federal treasury allocates these, these new market tax credits to CDEs around the country. In the last round, I think a couple hundred CDEs applied to Treasury to get an allocation. We, the city of Nashville, were working most carefully with Mascoma Bank, which is a bank up in the lakes, in the upper valley, that has gotten allocation sometimes in the past. And we believe that had they gotten an allocation, we would have gotten the $4 million already. But only a third of the CDAs, CDEs who applied got new market tax credits, and so, and Mascoma was not one of them. So after that happened, the economic, Tim Cummings and our consultant began working with other CDAs, and we're kind of on their list, but we're not first. If other projects fell through, we might still get an allocation from that last round. But the next round will come in June or July of this year, 2020. We're still working with Mascoma, we're trying to reach out to as many people as we poss, many CDEs as we possibly can, or they are, to get in line for as many CDEs as we possibly can, because that $4 million obviously would be very important. So I think that gives you an update on what has happened, but I return to the beginning. This is a project that is designed to build a healthier economy for downtown and for the entire city. I can tell you the fact that we're even thinking about, or looking like we're going to do this is already creating interest from private sector parties who are considering investing in downtown Nashville because of this. We saw someone suddenly get interested in the old Corvo Ruthier and the Henry Hanger sites. Those were permitted for 200 and some units of housing, that will bring in hundreds of thousands of dollars. Those haven't started, but the developer is working with others who are going to, who are going to build those projects out. There are other sites in Nashville where people have expressed a lot of interest, and it looks like they're very serious in proceeding, in part because, and these, some people from out of town, because of the Performing Arts Center. So the whole idea here is that you invest to attract other investment, to build a stronger economy, and in the end, build a stronger tax base, build up tax revenues, which benefit everyone. Because in the end, the downtown is a economic engine, like they say in Keene, the downtown is an economic engine for the city of Nashville. So that, I think, Madam President, gives you an overview. I apologize for going on as long as I did, but this project has been pending for a while. I think some of the original objectives sometimes get forgotten, and I know people are interested, and, you know, some, some people skeptical, some people highly supportive. But I wanted to give you the history and kind of report to you where I think we are right now, and if anybody has questions for me, and if that's permitted, I'd be glad to answer them, but I guess next we go to Mr. Cummings, is that correct?
I'm going to turn the meeting over to Alderman Dowd as Chair-
I'm going to turn the meeting over to Alderman Dowd as Chair of the Budget Committee. So Alderman Dowd.
Okay, just before Mr. Cummings comes up, I just want to explain what is going to happen this evening. We're going to have a public hearing on the amendment to R 20001, or it's an amendment to R 18001. It's only the amendment that this public hearing is about, not, not the bill itself to build the Performing Arts Center. It's only to eliminate the time constraint for the funding. The public hearing, I will be calling testimony in favor and opposition. One at a time, I will ask people to come up and speak into the microphone. I'm asking that you limit your comments to approximately three minutes. If everybody in this room spoke, that'd be over two hours. So please, I do not want people carrying on, especially if it's not related directly to this legislation, because I'll have to stop you. And then after the public hearing, we'll close the public hearing and we'll open the budget meeting. We have a few pieces of legislation and budget to, to take up, including this one. And the Budget Committee will send the legislation to the full Board of Alderman with either a positive or negative recommendation. The final decision on this amendment will happen next Tuesday at the full Board of Alderman meeting. Okay?
It's Wednesday.
Wednesday, I'm sorry, there is a minor thing going on Tuesday. Hopefully, nothing like Iowa, but anyway. So before we get started with comments and public hearing, I am going to ask Director of Economic Development, Mr. Tim Cummings, to come up and, and please present. And he is assisted ably by Ms. Novotny.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the record. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the record. Tim Cummings, Director of Economic Development. And with me this evening is the Chair of the Capital Campaign Committee, Deb Novotny. So I provided you a communication, a written memo, which I'm going to read from, which essentially provides a status update on the project and analysis of R 18001. So the purpose of the memo I wrote to you is to provide an update on the Performing Arts Center project. The legislation strikes the two-year time period for raising the $4 million. And to provide you some context relative to the timeline, the following is being provided in an effort to give you a general context for the timing necessary to get this project up and running. The fact is, there was a lot of initial upfront work necessary creating and establishing and developing the differing entities that are the vehicles to bring this project to fruition. First, the resolution authorizing the Performing Arts Center was passed in the winter of 2018. From there, getting the steering committee populated and functioning was the next order of business. This took time. There are many stakeholders involved. From there, the steering committee needed to organize itself and develop a rhythm, which is vitally important for the project's success. And again, takes time. The culture that developed is one where the committee worked and acts in a very collaborative and consensus-building manner. The steering committee developed three working groups and focused on operations, design, and fundraising. These were working groups that met throughout the spring and summer of 2018 and beyond. Simultaneously, there was a public procurement process to solicit an architecture and engineering firms, along with an operator and construction manager. This all occurred in the latter half of 2018. I would be remiss not to point out that the Performing Arts Center tour took place, which was in the summer of 2018 as well, and the tour was a great team-building exercise and helped to educate and give a frame of reference for the project. We did not engage the architect and engineers and construction manager until the winter of 2018, early of 2019, as mentioned earlier by the mayor. And please remember, we had the untimely passing of the Chair of the Performing Arts Center Steering Committee, President Brian McCarthy, which understandably delayed some of the committee business as we needed to reorganize ourselves. Simultaneous to all that, the steering committee's working group focused on fundraising while organizing and beginning to tackle the challenge of raising private money for the Performing Arts Center. A public procurement process occurred in the spring of 2018 to solicit a fundraising consultant, as mentioned earlier this evening. Once the selection was made to hire Full Circle Consulting, which is the company Betsy McNamara works for, a fundraising assessment and feasibility study began, where 30-ish interviews over a four-to-eight-week period occurred during the summer of 2018. This led to the recommendation and development of a capital campaign plan. One of the more pressing items that developed was the need to create and organize a capital campaign committee. Recruiting and forming a capital campaign committee occurred throughout the entire fall of 2018. And the first capital campaign committee meeting occurred in December of 2018. However, just because the capital campaign committee was formed does not mean solicitation started. Once the recruitment period occurred, an onboarding and educational process ensued. A lot of the volunteers acknowledged that this was the first capital campaign, and an educational effort transpired during the better part of the winter of 2019 and into early spring. Ironically, as the capital campaign committee was being formed, the design process was just starting to get underway in January of 2019. The two efforts needed to go hand-in-hand, because you cannot realistically solicit donations until a concrete design is achieved. Being the very high-profile public nature of this project, a robust committee process and public engagement piece occurred on the design, which meant the designs were not recommended by the Performing Arts Center Steering Committee until June slash July of 2019, or approved by the Board of Alderman Infrastructure Committee until August of 2019. Conversely, the fundraising efforts did not begin in earnest until the end of the summer of 2019. However, the capital campaign committee did not sit idle during the spring and summer. There were a lot of quote-unquote "soft" meetings taking place to develop leads. Additionally, during the preparation and organizational phase in the spring of 2019, there was an agreement reached with City Arts of Nashville to be the fiscal agent as a precursor to the 501(c)(3) entity that was actually formed in 2019, and all that took some time. It was during the spring of 2019 also that an application for CDFA tax credits occurred, and I am pleased to state the application was successful, and the project was awarded tax credits in the summer of 2019. It was a great way to jumpstart the fundraising efforts. Fundraising efforts did not start in earnest until the end and summer or fall of 2019. And I wanted to give you all that recap to hopefully show and demonstrate that a lot of work has transpired over the last couple of years. And although it may not seem it, and I didn't even realize it until I wrote this narrative down, we have accomplished a lot of tasks in a very small amount of time. So, Mr. Chair, if I could, I'd like to turn it over now to the Chair of the Capital Campaign Committee to say a few words.
Ms. Novotny.
Thank you. What have we been doing, again, since December? We were in the training and preparation stage. We hit the ground running in August of 2019. Today, we've secured 30 pledges by meeting face-to-face with people and businesses, often more than once. Remember, we are asking in a capital campaign for major and lead gifts. We're asking people to give of their assets, not their income. So these conversations do take time, but we've secured 30 as of last week. We're following up with several others who are in different phases of their decision process, and we have several initial meetings with people coming up over the next two weeks. We also have over 75 lead and top prospects identified that we need to make contact with. And actually, that just scratches the surface. The campaign is going really well. We've received positive feedback from our community, as well as other communities surrounding us. As committee members, most of whom either have a full-time job or run their own business, we've been doing and will continue to do all the things that make a capital campaign successful, and have seen and are seeing the fruits of our hard work. Most capital campaigns take three to five years, and we've done really well in the past seven months. We're ahead of all of our internal milestones that we set for ourselves, and we will continue to remain on course. If a deadline is required, we do request an additional two years.
So, Mr. Chair, I'll just close by saying it was never the intention for when the fundraising timeline was originally discussed during the feasibility study for it to be memorialized. It was originally discussed as a plan or a guidepost, which we should all recognize that some of the best-laid plans need to change and evolve. If the committee wasn't working or gaining the momentum, I could understand a concern being raised, but this couldn't be the furthest from the reality of the situation. The Capital Campaign Committee is working tirelessly, and they are just appealing for some more time. It's my recommendation that this body approve R 18001 and allow for more time for this project and the fundraising to occur. Lastly, I just want to note that we have also an overall project status update one-pager for you. I'm not going to go into detail on that, but I do want to call out a couple particular items, particularly because there are some audience members here who've asked me to make sure I am very clear and transparent on some of the, on some of the particular numbers with this project. So a cost estimate was recently done, and it came in at $23.8 million. That's, that's what the project is looking like right now.
Can you repeat that number, please, because it's hard to hear?
Yes. The cost estimate that was recently done is showing it to be at $23.8 million. We're striving to reduce that down to something in the order of $21 to $22 million, which is the targeted goal. We have three main sources identified for, for funding this project. $15.5 million of city general obligation bonds. We've identified new market tax credits at $4.2 million, and then local private fundraising capital at $2.5 million. That raises us, if all in, at $22.2 million. So the overall financial plan would be to use 70% of the project funding coming from the general obligation bond, 20-ish percent from the new market tax credits, and then 10% from the, from the capital campaign committee. We're working towards that 20% as a new market tax credit. We're working towards that 10% as the local philanthropic capital, charitable capital to be contributed to the project. That's 30% of the total project funding. We have confidence in the 10% that's, that's coming together, if you're willing to give us an extension of the timeline, and we are working aggressively for that other 20%. But that other 20%, through the new market tax credit, new market tax credit is, is beyond our control, and, and it's something that we won't really learn about until early summer, June or, June or July timeframe. So I just want to make sure that everyone understands that. So there is a possibility at some point that we may need to revisit how to close that 20% gap in the, in the funding plan, once we hear from the, from the new market tax credit folks as to, as to where things stand come, come early summer. So I just want to make sure that that was also very clearly understood, again, for, for folks. With that being said, Mr. Chair, I hope this evening, this body feels in favor of, feels as though they, they can support the resolution and votes in favor of the, of the legislation before you. Thank you.
Okay, as is the case in all public hearings, for the people that presented, are there any questions from any of the Aldermen before we proceed to public input? Alderman Jettie.
So the, you know, people are concerned about the, the status of the project. I understand what you've, what you've said about the, the quiet phase, I think you called it, about the fundraising, and that the, the fundraising professional that we've engaged has been advising you to proceed in this way with this quiet phase. And, you know, the problem, you know, as I've told you, is that, you know, when we, when we don't say how much money we've got, people are assuming you don't have any. The $250,000 that Bank of America announced last week, I think it was, was, was great news, but that's the first we've heard about, about any money. And now the mayor said that Enterprise has added $100,000 to that. You know, can you, you know, can, what can you tell us to, to kind of give us comfort that when you say things are going well, you know, it would be great to know how well they're going, you know, how much money you've been able to raise so far?
Thank you for the question, Alderman Jettie. We have 30 lead and major donor gifts at this time.
Is the mic on?
It is, yeah. It's directional, we have to speak.
Speak right into the...
Yeah.
Can you hear me now? We have 30 lead and major gifts right now, and we have about 20 on the table that are waiting, that we're waiting for their final commitment on. As the mayor said, we had a $250 public announcement from Bank of America. That was their choice to publicly announce their gift. We, prior to their gift, we had already sold the tax credits, and Enterprise Bank was already in before Bank of America made their gift, as were several other businesses and individuals. So you did the math, I know you all can do the math, so you know what we have a minimum of, and I can tell you that we have more than that, obviously. We are following a proven capital campaign strategy. And the capital campaign strategy is to raise 70% of our goal by having conversations face-to-face with businesses and individuals. We have a committee, we have a core committee of people, eight people, who all work either, you know, either at a full-time job or run their business. If we were to go public at this time, we don't have the resources, and we're not ready. We really want to have 70%, of the goal before we announce it.
All set, Alderman Jettie?
No, if I could, so when you say do the math, I know that Bank of America has pledged $250,000. The state credit, takes the state tax credit from the Community Development Finance Authority, you know, the mayor mentioned 300 and something, but actually, the amount that we're getting from that is $294,000. Correct?
Thank you.
Okay. And then, then Enterprise is, is the $100,000? So I add up $644,000 right now.
We have, so we have 30 pledges.
But, but you can't, you can't say how much that equals.
No, because it will, again, we're in, there's a reason why we're not, that we're in this quiet phase. It's because of the conversations that we're having, and once we talk about the dollar amount, we are no longer in the quiet phase, we're in the public phase. And we have a lot more conversations to be had in the quiet phase. We all know that our goal, our goal is 2.5. We also know that there's a new market tax credits that we're not sure about. So we are committed to raising more than 2.5. We're really trying to get as close as we can to the 2.5 before we go into the public phase. Part of the public phase is to sell the seats in the auditorium in the Performing Arts Center, 750 seats for $1,000 each. That would be part of the public campaign, so we're really, our goal is to raise more than 2.5. We just want to be as close to the 2.5 after having these conversations that are already scheduled before we go into that public phase. We do have several members of the community who have said that they'll go in, that they will be, that they're going to help us in the public phase. So planning the events, the social media, admin support, they're ready, and they're starting to, their marketing support, they're really getting those things in place now to be ready to go into the public phase. We anticipate that they'll have an event where they will invite all of our donors who are already on board and recognize them, and each of them who want to be recognized, and then announce the total. And I think that momentum of announcing the total at that type of event is going to be the most successful way to raise more money for the Performing Arts Center.
There are several people... You know, there are several people who want to ask questions. Do you have another question, or?
I do have, I do have more questions.
All right.
So, the, is it reasonable that these announcements could occur, you know, by the summer?
We hope so.
Okay.
You know, it is, you know, it's February, and we have, we have a really good pipeline. We have, one of the things we were talking about today, because I thought there's maybe a question, is of all of the people that you've talked to and had conversations with, has anyone that you've asked said no? And we don't have anyone that has said no. We have had people that have pledged, we have people who said, you know, they need to, we're, again, we're asking them not to do 10% of their income, we're asking them to go into their CDs and savings accounts and take money out of their assets to give it to us. That's a conversation that they not only need to have with us to really understand the project and what it's going to mean to Nashua, but then they need to go and talk to their families about it. So, in respect to them, we're giving them the time because we know that's what they, it's any capital campaign, you don't ask someone and they write you a check for $1 million. I wish they would, if anyone in the room wants to, that would be great. But that isn't typical, that isn't what happens. It's conversations, multiple conversations with people to show them the value of what the Performing Arts Center will bring, and that's what we're doing in face-to-face meetings with these donors.
And if I could just, one last question from Ms. Navatney. The state tax credits of 294, is that part of your 2.5, or is your 2.5 aren't, that's part of it? Okay. Thank you.
Now, to tell you a little bit about, as far as those tax credits go, people who purchased those tax credits are making a decision to have money directed to the state of New Hampshire be applied to this project, and they specifically choose this project. So, it does show, the fact that we've already sold all of the tax credits does show that we have a lot of support in the community, as well as from Bank of America, as well as from many of the local banks, as well as from many of the downtown businesses. We have a lot of support. Everyone we're talking to is really, everyone that we're talking to is really positive about the Performing Arts Center and is excited for the doors to open.
I have Alderman Clemmons and Alderman Lou.
Thank you. I wish Corporation Council was here for my question, but perhaps the mayor or somebody else can indulge us. The, you know, I know it's being referred to as a quiet phase, but what I struggle with is the fact that we have the right to know law, and people want to know what the, what's being done here. Has this been vetted against the right to know law as far as us being, or the city being involved with something where we're not disclosing what's going on? Has that been vetted?
I'm seeing Mr. Cummings shaking his head, yes.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just very quickly, it has been vetted, and it's, the reason why it was structured the way it was is the money does not actually come to the city of Nashua, it's coming to a separate legal entity, originally as a fiscal agent, and now as a separate 501(c)(3) nonprofit, and therefore, it's not subject to any of the right to know disclosures.
Follow-up, Alderman Clemmons?
No, I, yes, only to say that I appreciate that explanation. I think that that will help some folks in the community understand why, you know, it's, why there is a separation there with how we, you know, because obviously, people want to know, they want to know how successful this is, and I think there's a lot of curiosity there. But I think it, you know, they also have the legal question of, you know, how can the city be involved with something like this without disclosing certain things? So, the fact that it's been vetted by our Corporation Council with a, quite frankly, reasonable explanation, I think is important for the public to know and understand. So, that was my, that was my question, and I'll ask further questions at the budget meeting, so that folks can have their say here tonight.
Did you want to add something, Ms. Navatney?
The nonprofit organization that was started is really a benefit to our fundraising. If we were going out to have these conversations with people and then said, oh, by the way, it's subject to the right to know, and we need to be able to give your name and the dollar amount that you gave and make it public, it would impact our ability to raise funds.
Alderman Lou?
Thank you. Ms. Navatney, if I was to be on your list of 75 donors, and I wanted to make a major gift, what's the minimum that I should prepare to donate?
Ms. Navatney?
We are, when we are bringing out the naming opportunities and talking to people about major and lead gifts, we're looking at $25,000 and more. Some people that we are going out to, obviously, are coming in at, some people, five or 15, but we're really, we're leading them at the 25.
Any other questions? All right, I'm going to open up the public comment. Again, this public hearing is on an amendment to R 18001 eliminating the timing requirement for the public funds, so please limit all your comments to that one subject, and limit your comments to approximately three minutes. They now take testimony in favor. You want to speak in favor, please come up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Lathamajipudi. I reside at 20 Salmon Brook Drive, and I've resided in Nashua for over 30 years, and I am in support of this extension, having served on several nonprofit advisory boards, such as Chinmea Mission and over, where we had to raise $5 million over three years, and then currently serving on New Hampshire Charitable Foundation Regional Board, and I'm not raising funds there, but, you know, having understood what the process is, it's very important to keep the initial phase of capital campaign on the stealth mode, and because there's a lot of hesitation on major donors to make their name and contribution public too early. Having said that, I would, you know, I keep buying mass million, mega millions. One of these days, I'll hit the three-figure, and I will make that check donation. But this is a typical, I've gone to several of the trainings for fundraising on several of the boards. This is one of the major things they talk to you about, initial phases. You have to keep it, and you, especially going for the big donors. It's, you know, on a pyramid, you come from the top down, the large donors, half a million, quarter of a million, 100,000, then on the base of the pyramid is the large base. So, the human behavior is, when you ask for a donation, they ask what's the minimum, and human nature is to go for the lowest denomination. So, in order to work on that, and this is a pride for our community, this is such a big pride, and we have talked about it, just like the rail project, we have talked about it for several decades, or, you know, this is in particular, this is a reality. So, let's not botch it, and let's not shoot ourselves in the foot, and this is the due diligence that I'm so excited to be part, I'm not part of the team, full disclosure, I'm not fundraising, but to talk about this, to talk outside of my community here in Nashua, to say, we are getting a performing arts center. Would you like to come and participate? Would you like to give a donation? And you're right, people are looking at it. So, I would really encourage the elected officials who represent my voice to vote in favor of this extension and keep this project moving, and hope it becomes a reality. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to speak in favor of R 20001?
Mary Lou Blaisdell, I live at 32 Webster Street in Nashua. I've spoken to you several times in favor of this project, and I am a downtown business owner. I also serve on the Steering Committee and on the Capital Campaign Committee. I think Deb, Rich, Philip, and all of us have more meals with each other than we do with our families now, because we are meeting so often. We're working very hard to move this program forward. We have a vast amount of positive energy going into this program through the Steering Committee and through the people we've sitting down and talking to and asking for donations. We will meet our goal. It's very strong, it's moving in a very positive manner, and it's very exciting. This project isn't just a project for downtown, it's a project for the city of Nashua. We have presented to you on numerous times how an art center helps an economy within a city. Everything that you read, every art program that you read about that comes into a city proves positive economic results for a city, and it will do that for ours. Not only am I volunteering my time for this program, this Performing Arts Center, I've made a pledge, my husband and I have made a substantial pledge personally, and we have through our business, too. So, both professionally and personally, we support this 100%. Thank you.
Anyone else that would like to speak in favor of this?
Hi, my name is Elaine Olenson. I live on Raymond Street in Nashua. I've lived in Nashua for 35 years. I'm on the Board of Directors for the Nashua International Sculpture Symposium. I am very much in favor of this resolution. For me, the Performing Arts Center is an investment in Nashua's future. Nashua will benefit greatly from the completion of the Performing Arts Center. I have many, many friends who live in Massachusetts, and they tell me all the time, they're asking me all the time, how is it going? They want to come here to partake in this Performing Arts Center when it's completed. People want to live in and visit a vibrant city. We are so fortunate to have so many family-run restaurants and shops downtown. Many are second and third generation, small businesses, and they are, they are Main Street's heart, heart and soul. They are the heart and soul of Main Street. Currently, Nashua, everybody knows this, but it bears repeating, currently Nashua holds the award for New Hampshire's Most Creative City, Community, Most Creative Community. We have become a destination for the arts, and continuing to build on our foundation of great music, murals, sculptures, and our many great American downtown activities and festivals, just makes sense to continue to build on that through having a performing performing arts center. Completion of the Performing Arts Center would likely create 120 jobs and bring approximately 70,000 people to downtown. There is, there's a nonprofit organization known as Americans for the Arts, which focuses on advancing the arts in the United States. I would recommend folks check out their website. Their website explains how investing in the arts has a positive economic return. You go to americansforarts.com. So, let's courageously keep moving forward and create the Performing Arts Center. Many years from now, generations to come will be grateful. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor of this?
Hi, everybody. My name is Mark Thayer. I live at 1 Clock Tower Place. It's downtown, if you haven't heard of it. And I'm the Executive Director of Symphony New Hampshire. The Symphony was founded here in 1923, and until very recently, it was known as Nashua Symphony Orchestra. We're excited about coming to our 100th anniversary in three years, and I'm very happy to speak now in favor of this amendment and this building project, which is very important to us and to our future and the future of this city. We just hired a new music director, Roger Collier, who will be moving here with his wife from California, and he's also very excited about being involved with the Performing Arts Center. We know this arts center will be a valuable asset in downtown Nashua and will generate increased businesses for our restaurants, hotels, and other businesses on Main Street. We know our favorite restaurants on Main Street are packed before and after our concerts. Sometimes I can't get in. The Symphony will continue to need the Keef Auditorium for its size and seating capacity, but we also look forward to using the new pack for smaller orchestra concerts, educational programs, and new types of concerts that you might not expect from an orchestra. We are seeing, in the past few years, more and more people coming to our concerts from Billerica and Lowell and other small towns around there that I can't pronounce. We have audience members coming from Exeter and Lebanon and Francis Town and Jaffrey, believe it or not, and they're becoming donors. They're bringing revenue to Nashua, that's what the arts do. They're bringing people and money here. The pack will increase pedestrian traffic on Main Street, which will help security at night and make Main Street a more desirable place for new businesses to locate. We believe we're stronger together. More concerts happening here in Nashua means more people coming here and more awareness and visibility for all of us. This tells people you don't have to go to Boston for quality arts and concerts. We also know we fail together. With less to do here, our audiences and visitors will look elsewhere. There's a lot of competition for entertainment on Saturday nights, and we want people coming to Nashua for dinner and a show. I've been involved in various building projects and capital campaigns elsewhere, and this is a very normal process with a quiet phase, and if you blow that and screw it up and go public too soon, you lose all of those major pledges. That's a very common practice, and it works everywhere. On a personal note, I moved here four years ago for this job. I don't have family here, I didn't go to school here, I have no nostalgic connections to Nashua or New Hampshire. I'm one of those statistics that you're talking about, trying to get to move here to work. I enjoy living downtown, we enjoy the street festivals, the farmer's market, the live music up and down Main Street, and when this project was first voted down by the former Board of Aldermen, it really made me consider whether or not I wanted to live here. You need this project. Cities don't stay stagnant, they improve or they decline. You've made so much progress in the past few years, please don't start to go backwards now. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to speak in favor of this resolution?
Good evening, everyone. Lou Jaris here at, from Haynes Street in Nashua, and much like Jim had said earlier, this project will be another linchpin in bringing more development to downtown, and, you know, things are changing. And, you know, things are changing. People are moving to more urban centers now. And in order for this to happen and to happen successfully, like the previous speaker said, this amendment needs to happen so we can keep, keep the fundraising momentum going. And blowing the cover is probably not a wise thing. Again, you're seeing some changes, it's going to make some people uncomfortable, some of these votes need a little bit more courage than other votes. You're going to have some people talk later, and it's going to be the usual, the throwing of the wet blanket over, you know, why are we doing this? Why don't we sell it? We don't understand, you know, it's too risky. Again, there is much of an upside to this, and the, the committee's doing a good job. We'd like to see it happen faster. So we're at this, this stage now where we have to make adjustments to, in order to have the, this effort move forward and to, to see it come to fruition. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to speak in favor of this?
Okay, my name's Fred Teebum. And I live at 24 Cheyenne Drive, and I am in favor of this particular amendment, this is the Second Amendment. What this amendment does is restrict, eliminate the two-year restriction limit on raising $4 million. I thought when it initially came out, and I think Clarence had something to do with it, it wasn't really based on fact, it just came out at a moment's notice, there were no facts behind it. So eliminating this two, two years makes a lot of sense. On the other hand, I have concerns about, and I'll come back on the negative side, some of the concerns I have. But just on this question, I have two questions, this being a public hearing. And this, first of all, to the fundraiser. Question is, when a organization makes, makes a pledge, let's say during this quiet phase, is that pledge cash? Can they reneg on the pledge? Can they put conditions on the pledge, like I, they gotta raise a million before my pledge comes through? Exactly what are the conditions of this pledges that you talk about?
Ms. Novotny, would you like to answer that?
I would. Thank you, Mr. Teebum. Our pledge, if you're making, you can write a check upfront, you can pledge over five years, we would bill you every year. And as far as any conditions on it, if the Performing Arts Center, so all of these funds are being held strictly for the Performing Arts Center, and if it doesn't come to fruition, the pledges will get their money back, and that's the only way.
Okay, I know a lot about fundraising. After all, we built Holocaust Memorial, and it raised well over half a million dollars. There were two large donors. I was one, and somebody else came out with over $25,000 as well. The rest was all small money, and many people here donated, and Omer Donches has a, has a brick. So I know a lot about fundraising. But a pledge does not necessarily mean cash in the bank. So what happens when you reach your $2 million and find out people are reneged, and they don't produce? Have you signed an oath? They sign an affirmation? Exactly how do you collect on a pledge that isn't making good? That was my question.
All of the people who are pledging donations are signing an agreement.
They sign an agreement?
Yes.
That's legally binding?
No, it's an agreement, you know, we, yes, and could someone, could someone reneg? But typically with, typically when you're making a donation to a nonprofit for something, most people, it doesn't happen.
Right. Final question?
For me?
No, this is to, whoever can answer the question, probably Tim. How much money thus far has a city spent on fundraising?
Mr. Cummings?
Yes, thank you. Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Give me one second, I am, quickly, this is going to be an approximate number. I'm going to say we, 24, 48? Approximately $50,000, and that may go up a little bit more to something like $60,000.
And that's both for the new market tax credit consultant? Okay, so add, how much more do we spend on the new market tax credit consultant?
This, Mr. Chair, if I may, the spending of the new market tax credit consultant to date is approximately $25,000. It's a phased contract, it's, we're in phase one, that, that is, again, a 25-ish thousand dollars. If we go into phase two, it's an additional, and again, it's subject to us receiving the new market tax credit, but that would be an additional, I'm going to say $40,000, 35, $40,000 for that second, for that second phase. And I just want to be clear, the funding for these two, two expenses comes from the Downtown Improvement Committee, where they elected to put some of their resources towards, towards this project.
Okay, so that money does not come out of the proceeds so far, and it doesn't come out of 15.5 million?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor of this legislation?
Good evening, everyone. Philip Skontas, 14 Ashland Street. This is always the most intimidating group to speak of. I don't know, I don't know why my heart is like beating, but I guess I'm pretty passionate about this, and you can probably guess why. Again, not to be redundant, but I'm a third-generation business owner in downtown Nashua, and I've seen a lot of things come and go, and have been involved with a lot of things. And I have to say that I'm really proud to be involved in this project. It has been a project that has been thoroughly, thoroughly thought out. The studies that have been done, the, the people that have been involved have really been top-notch. When you're, when you see what the, the, this building and this, this Performing Arts Center will bring to, I get, I get a little crazy when people keep concentrating on just downtown, I keep saying what it will bring to Nashua. And I think it's pretty amazing, and I hope that all of my friends on the board understand that my feelings are not just because I am downtown, but just, but because I feel that it is the right thing and the right direction for our city to do. I am also on the capital campaign committee, and I'm, I have to say that the enthusiasm that we have seen from people to give money has been overwhelming. It's not an easy task, as you can imagine, people have to really think this through, especially with these major gifts, but the response has been really awesome. I know that, I can personally tell you that my family has dug deep and is going to make a major donation, and as well as a lot of my fellow business people downtown and friends and business people that I know around the city. The other thing I want to tell everybody here is that when I speak about the Performing Arts Center, I always ask people's opinion, and I have to say that it is positive, it's a resounding positive response that I get from people that live, work, play, shop in Nashua, have, a lot of people that don't even live in Nashua, I think it's, it's just a really wonderful thing and envy it for their towns. So I hope that you will all think long and hard on this. I know it seems like we're being, it's being secretive, and it's, and you've all heard the whole concept, and the, and this wonderful consultant that we've hired is a pretty smart cookie, and I, I respect her opinion, I really respect her opinion. I know it feels, it's, it's kind of tough to not, to vote on something and not know, but understand that it is going well. It is, we are doing well, I'm not faking it to make it, this is really the truth. And I'm pretty proud to be a part of it, and I hope you will all be proud to be a part of it, because it's going to bring us to the next level as a city. And let's, let's all do this together. I think that it's something that we owe it to ourselves, so thank you very much for indulging me.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to speak in favor of this legislation?
Good evening. My name is Alfred Vane, and the song is about me. Most people don't get that joke.[1202.14][1202.14](Laughter). I'm from Manchester, New Hampshire, actually, but I do have some ties here in, in Nashua. I own five restaurants, one in Concord, New Hampshire, one in Manchester, New Hampshire, two in Nashua, New Hampshire. Codex Bar for one, and I am part owner of Flight Center. The mayor spoke very positively about the outsenders that are happening around the state that I'm very familiar with. Concord has Capital Arts Center, which, when I first came to Concord, Concord Arts Center was just starting, and it was, the momentum of the city was growing. We then got the Colonial Phoenix Hall in downtown Concord is making a true comeback. I don't, I don't, if any of you know who Mark Shabroski is, he's really pushing to recreate Phoenix Hall, and there's a lot of momentum behind that. My restaurant, Cheddar and Rye, is literally on the same block as the Palace Theater, and we get so much business and so many people coming to the Palace Theater, coming to the downtown area to just, you know, spend money and to have that entertainment and to have that and, and be a part of downtown. Nashua and Concord, or in, at Codex, it's kind of a weird kind of thing, because, you know, I never expected it to be as successful as it is. It is the most successful restaurant that I have without spending a penny on advertising. We do it with word of mouth, and we have people coming to Codex as a destination place. We've been named the best, best craft cocktail bar in the state of New Hampshire four or five years running. We're very proud of it. My team is very proud of it. Because of that, word of mouth, we get, one of the things I always ask and the bartenders always talk about at the end of the night is, oh, how did people find out about us? You know, day one, when we first started Codex, we sat there for the first hour, again, not a penny on advertisement. First hour went by, maybe two customers, and I was thinking, oh, great, this was not a good idea. And then all of a sudden, boom, about 6:30 hit, and we had a line out the door. And on most summer nights in Nashua, as all business owners know in Nashua, New Hampshire, most summer nights are the difficult nights, because Nashua unfortunately isn't quite the tourist destination that we'd all like, all like it to be. Although Codex does pretty well, because it is a destination spot. This event center, this, the art center that everybody's debating about, is going to be a destination place, very much like Codex, very much like the Palace Theater, very much like Capital Arts Center, very much like Phoenix Hall when it's sun. And it doesn't make sense not to amend, continue with this amendment, and to give us more time for the city of Nashua to make Nashua a destination spot, just like Concord, Manchester. I don't have a business in Keene, so I'm sorry, Mayor, I can't talk about Keene. So I'm in favor of this amendment, I think is a good thing for Nashua, I'm proud to be part of the Nashua business community, and thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to speak in favor of this legislation?
Good evening. My name is Bernie Marchowski. I live at 21 Westbrook Drive. I'm a 35-plus-year resident of Nashua, and absolutely had no plans and staff of standing in front of you this evening to talk about this particular subject, subject. I came here merely to witness what goes on in our community, and I'm happy to see so many positive people representing those people who are in favor of doing this in our town, in our town. It's been a long time since I represented Georgia's apparel in Manchester and telling people how to dress to go to their business meetings, so I'm a little uncomfortable at this time, but nevertheless, (Laughter) I'm here to represent seniors, frankly, because I think we often get overlooked in these situations. And we traveled to Ogunquit, we traveled to Keene, we traveled to Manchester, we travel all over Massachusetts to go to shows. We love being entertained, just as anyone else does. I'm getting a little emotional, excuse me. But nevertheless, we too, on nights like tonight, find it difficult to drive, to be able to make our way to where we want to go. It's rainy out, it's snowy, it's hard to get to where you want to go. We need somewhere to go in this community, and I hope you will decide to make that happen for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to speak in favor of this legislation?
Hello, my name is Lindsay Rinaldi, and although I currently live in Lowell, Mass, I did live at 24 Woodfield Street for over 30 years, and I still very much consider Nashua, New Hampshire, my home. In fact, the last time I stood at this podium, it was during my law and ethics class here in this school, so I really hope they did a good job.[1562.22][1562.22](Laughter). So I chose to come back to Nashua to serve as a public servant. I am the executive director of the Nashua Community Music School, which is a 35-year-old nonprofit organization that serves this area. I also currently serve as the chair of the Nashua Arts Commission, and I'm also been fortunate enough to be asked to be a part of this wonderful steering committee for the Performing Arts Center. I speak strongly in favor of this amendment. I think it's really important that we give the good team that we've assembled more time to be able to put together an amazing project that has already been two years in the making. I can speak firsthand, saying that I think Nashuans as a whole, they have a lot of heart. So we have a lot to say, right? All right, we have a lot to give to others. The charitable community in this area is, is so warm and so welcoming, and I say that as a member, as a member of it, because of the Nashua Community Music School and our nonprofit status, I see that firsthand. And I think Nashuans see that there is a lot of value in what we have now, but I think that it's really important as, as public servants, for myself and the folks on the board, that, that we also embrace all the potential that, that we do have to, to still reach. And this Performing Arts Center project, and your choice to extending the time and allowing us to have more time to make it as successful as it has the potential to be, will really help us reach that level of potential. As the chair of the Nashua Arts Commission, I want to share, there's six goals that exist in our most recent Nashua Arts and Culture Plan, and the Performing Arts Center hits all of them. We want to create an identity for Nashua as an arts destination. We want to increase a marketing value, something that draws people here, this project does that. Mr. Mayor and Director Cummings have spoken at length about the economic development benefits. That addresses the commerce goal of our current Arts and Culture Plan. It will inevitably bring growth and education to not only the people who are currently here in the city, living and working and enjoying what we do, but also provides a centralization effort, knowing that this Performing Arts Center is an integral part of our downtown, of our center. I ask you, Board of Aldermen, the team that is on this project is good. The steering committee has not acted in haste. There are two dedicated groups, one working on design and operations, and another working on financial fundraising, and they are proceeding thoughtfully and carefully, and they want to act strategically. They don't want to be rushed to fit a, to fit a means that, that is not the success level that we deserve. There has been a specialty team working with the volunteer committee of architects, of theater consultants, of lighting consultants, acoustic consultants. The committee themselves is a group and a mix of audience members, arts lovers, and people like myself, musicians and theater professionals, who are with the project every step of the way, saying, this is going to be the best thing for our Performing Arts Center to be successful, and this is the best way it's going to serve our community. I need you to consider an extension of time for this funding. A can, extension of time for this funding could have such a negative effect, it could, it could affect... It could, it could affect derail the entire project. But an extension of time for the funding for this project does not mean we're asking for an extension of time for the project as a whole. If we're allowed to proceed as we are currently working, our goal is so that the project will be open and operational in the fall of 2021. That's our goal right now. If you give us more time, there's a really good chance we'll be able to, to have that and to see that success firsthand. If you choose not to give us that extra time, the building within the center of Nashua that could be the heart of what we do here and who we draw here could be empty, could be a vacant space, could take years to become a new level of potential for us here in Nashua to reach. I think that everyone in this room, whether you're on the board or you're in the audience, I think everybody wants the same thing. I think we want to make Nashua a special place to live a long and happy life. And this project, I ask you to vote in favor of this amendment because this project will help us get there.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor of this legislation? Is there anyone that would like to speak in opposition to this legislation?
Hello, everyone. Ken Siegel, 224 Parker Street, Lowell, Massachusetts, former Board of Alderman member. How are you? I see some of my former colleagues on here. I'm not in opposition to the Arts Center. I'm actually addressing this specific piece of legislation which goes to whether or not there should be a timeframe on the fundraising or not. I was the person that put the original amendment in, that called for the two years. The reason I'm here is I think Alderman Cleer was rewarded for starting a thread in the Nashua Civic Sounding Board, tried to just be nice and basically got beaten about her head, I think. So I applaud her for her bravery. The reason that I put in the two-year time limit, and I'm not saying that you should keep the two-year time limit, I'm just trying to provide some historical perspective so everybody here can make an informed judgment about what to do. So I'm addressing the legislation. The reason it was put in there was because we were under the gun. In fall of 2017, John Kootsas had offered to the Board of Aldermen, the City of Nashua, Alex Sheu's store for $4 million. So unlike most projects, you sort of got the building before you had the concept behind it. But he was, he had other buyers, he was willing to give the City of Nashua a break, so we had to make a fairly quick decision about what to do with the building. And we voted to acquire that because the understanding at the time was that in the event that there was no Performing Arts Center, it was still a very valuable piece of real estate, and most likely it could be sold, and the City of Nash would not be on the hook for that $4 million permanently. So when the, the Performing Arts Center ideas were being developed, I think some of my colleagues may remember, we actually had some intern come by and do something that looked like I was at a Vanity Fair, a drawing, which was a little futuristic, clearly not appropriate. It was fairly clear back then that there needed to be a lot of legwork. The two-year timeframe did not come from members of the Performing Arts Center. The way that came about was, I had a breakfast with Simon Foose over at Norton's, and was, because he was asking my opinion about everything, trying to solicit votes. I was talking to him about the fundraising, asking how close he either was or wasn't, and we got, talking about timeframes, and I said, well, you know, would two years be enough time to get the money? Absolutely. Based on where they were at the time, his thoughts, they felt that that would be an appropriate amount of time. My feelings in putting amendment in there was we needed a kill switch to the entire project because in the event that it couldn't be properly funded with public and private donations, you have a $4 million asset on the books that's just going to sit there forever. I think people tend to forget about that, and that's why I felt compelled to come up here, to give you a little bit of history. That problem still exists. Now, I think Director Cummings underestimated the effect that Alderman McCarthy's death had on the entire process. It wasn't just a, we had to shuffle some meetings and rearrange things. He was more than the point man for this. He'd been the heart and soul of that entire project for years. I mean, my first term on the board, Brian had been talking about putting a Performing Arts Center on one of, on the roof of one of the garages, if you recall, and we went through that whole discussion. So there's a long history there. So I am very sympathetic with the idea of extending the timeframe because you took a very big hit. I know that the public is demanding to know how much money's been raised. I would actually say there's an alternate question to be asked, which is how much money was decommitted after Alderman McCarthy died? Now, I don't know the answer to that. I actually agree with your fundraiser that, that you really need to be confidential. So, but what I would urge the Board of Aldermen is to recognize that you still have that asset, that $4 million asset. You're still working towards the goal of having the Arts Center. Whatever I think or don't think, I'm in Lowell now, so I can enjoy a Performing Arts Center, so I can say, yeah, great, more free stuff.[951.63][951.63][laughter] Absolutely, please build it. But I want to caution you that you are on the hook for a $4 million asset, and if you want to do something, extend the deadline, but don't eliminate it. You really do need a cutoff. And frankly, I think it wouldn't hurt the fundraising to know that this has to be done by a certain amount of time, or the opportunity will not exist anymore. So rather than eliminate the, the deadline entirely, I would strongly urge you to amend it and, and provide a longer deadline if necessary. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak in opposition?
Thank you. Mike Susi, 3 Roseanne Circle. I'm a lifelong resident of Nashua, 60 years. As a youngster, I worked for the Parks Recreation Department. I worked for the school department as a substitute and a coach. I worked for the fire department for three years. I was a police officer for 20 years, fire commissioner for four years, and I passed Alderman in Ward Five. So I don't think anybody can challenge my love for this city. And thank you, Alderman Jettie, for your thoughtful questions. I really appreciate it. Here are my concerns. When this went on the ballot, I actually checked off no at the time because I thought the goal was too lofty. I didn't think we could meet that requirement, and lo and behold, if we did, we wouldn't be here today. We didn't meet it, so now we're asking for a rule change. Okay. But what happens if we don't meet the next goal? We can ask for another rule change? I mean, let's talk math. Okay, and my biggest concern is the lack of transparency. You can see it all over social media, everybody that I talked to, the nice questions that I heard from Alderman Jettie, what have we raised at this point? I'm hearing strategic plan, that we can't do it. I'm hearing all types of things, but when a big donation such as the $250,000 comes out, that's quickly acknowledged, or the $100,000. What else? Are we at 250 if we meet a requirement, but if we don't meet that requirement, that's gone? Where are we at? You are the Alderman. You are the elected officials that we trust with our purse. You are the people who are going to put us in this $15 million bond. And I'm standing here before you today as one of the largest, or as a representative, as one of the largest investors in this project, your taxpayer. $15 million. We deserve to know. We deserve to know if this is viable, if people are actually contributing. We're being told that it's ongoing and it's moving fast forward and all that, but it's not what we're seeing. We're not seeing that. And the math I'm talking about basically is change of rules plus lack of transparency equals distrust in government. And I got to tell you at this point, I really don't trust what I'm seeing until I can see some numbers. I can have my mind changed. I've always been open-minded on everything, but I need to see some numbers. I need to see something. And as an Alderman, when I was sitting in the Ward Five chair, there's no way I would have approved $15 million, $5 million, or even $10 without having the facts before me. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak in opposition? And this is comments only on the amendment before us in three minutes.
Lori Ordolano, 41 Berkeley Street. I think my issue here is similar to the gentleman who just spoke. I think it's about public trust and transparency. Mr. Clemmons brought up the 91A issue, which is appreciated, but he put it in terms of people are curious. I can tell you, my questions were not because I was curious, they were because I wanted to do a reality check. And that's different. And I do respect that you want to maintain confidentiality, but I think that there's got to be a better balance between confidentiality and transparency and public trust. I wrote my initial question to Mr. Cummings, just out of curiosity, because I knew this was happening. You know, what, what, where can I find out the money raised? I got the shortest answer, contact you, not by name, the capital campaign person. I'm no longer involved. I didn't even get a name or a phone number. I didn't even know who that was. So then there was other postings on social media, on the Scoop page, where another woman went out and she got a better response. But I think you should have had a better response, the city, knowing that this was happening. People were going to ask. I asked. I, I sent an email out to all of you because I figured you're coming in here, you guys must know, and I only got one response from an Alderwoman. So, you know, I, I, yeah, I think it's important that we have a different level of transparency, and my concern here is just with the total package, not just the, this extension, but I happen to think the new market tax credit is, I studied that extensively, that's a long shot, and I, I'm concerned that we can't pull the whole thing off. And I, and I don't know that I believe that the total cost of 23.8 is fixed. The more time we take, the higher the costs go. I think when you get into dirt costs and you start digging, you can see some really big run-ups, and that's concerning to me. I, I believe your campaign is going well, and you believe your campaign is going well. Let's face it, the market last year was hot, the investment market. Last year was a great year for people to come out and donate money. So you, you don't get a lot of years like we had last year. I'd love another one this year. Hope it's that way for us again, because it would be wonderful from a donating standpoint. But last year was the year to really rip down some private donations because the market was so good, and I'm concerned that we still don't have enough. The $294,000 that come from the state credit program, do we know how many people bought into that $294,000? You know, when that was a fixed program that went out and people could buy into that and it was all done, do we know how many bought into it?
Your time is up. If you have a question...
I just asked it.
Mr. Cummings, do you have an answer? No?
Okay. All right. Thank you for my three minutes.
Anyone else in opposition?
Good evening. Karen Bell, 95 Parnell Place. Can everybody hear me well in the back? Okay. Nashua, I'm a Nashua native also, and thank you for all of your comments. Former Alderman Susi, very well thought out. I can't agree more. The residents of Nashua in the original resolution were led to believe that there was $4 million waiting in the wings for this project, okay? That there were people known to the city management that would be donating. This was not and is not the case. When I asked last year in a private setting about the private donation monies raised, the answer was, I don't know. That's not an acceptable answer in any professional arena. If the mayor asks treasurer for debt how much money is outstanding in unpaid property taxes, do you think that the answer, I don't know, would be acceptable? I don't. It would not be acceptable in any financial situation. The $250,000 from Bank of America's contingent, it's not a given. It doesn't come without strings. It's a contingent on raising the 2.5 million. And again, the, the target's just going to keep moving. We don't have the money yet, we're going to, oh, that's okay, we'll, we'll present a resolution to move the target for however long. I don't know if there's a date in that resolution, but, and then we won't hit it, so we'll move it again. I ran a nonprofit in this town. I know how hard it is to raise money. I know about quiet phases. I know that people can cancel, but, you know, in the January 26 letter to the editor, Chuck Hafeman made some really great points, and, and I have it if anybody wants to read it. Fundraising didn't commence until almost a year and a half after it had passed. An official was quoted in the article as saying, "I was naive and didn't realize we couldn't start the fundraising." You know, when you get a job, you have to produce what you say you're going to produce in a certain amount of time. You don't get to say, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't know that I didn't know how to do this job, and I can't meet any of the deadlines. Joan Stillianus did a story in The Union Leader, and a friend of hers asked, oh, how much of the private funds have been raised? And she said, well, you know, we don't know. Some taxpayers feel duped because initially no renovation or construction could start until the $4 million in private funds was raised. And she was having a conversation with Joseph Olafair, I can't, I don't know how to say his last name, minister of music at First Church and performed as a guest conductor at Symphony, New Hampshire, who said, Nashua bought the building too quickly and without the proper paperwork, or legwork, rather. He said, they don't have, they don't have a pit, it's, it's not a good location. You have, you have Elm Street that has an orchestra pit and could do a lot of renovations instead of buying a place that needs beyond what someplace like Elm Street could use. I think we bought the building way too fast. I think people said, yeah, $4 million. They thought that there were people lined up, there are not, that we bought it without doing our due diligence, and we would be doing everyone a disservice if we continue to say, yes, we're just going to keep moving this target, because I'm a taxpayer, and my taxes have gone up 27% in the last 10 years. So, you know, if I'm going to be footing the bill, no, I'm not your biggest investor. I don't want to be.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak in opposition?
I'm opposed. I'm in Flatrum, 24 Cheyenne Drive. Now, I attended all the, nearly all the PAC committee meetings. I read every one of the proposals, and I'm pretty familiar with this project at this point. And I'll, I do look forward to buying a season ticket. I think you have a good proponent in the form of Tim Cummins. You have a very active team, PAC team, but I'm concerned about the financial viability of this project. First of all, we spent a lot of time talking about the $2.5 million, what they call the capital campaign. The note discussion about that $4.2 million is supposed to be raised with these new market tax credits. So in 2019, we got zip. What do we get zip in 2020? So I did an analysis, and I'd like to make this analysis part of the public record. I have enough copies. I'm not going to go into details because there's a lot of details on this sheet, I'm not going to go into that, that's not the purpose, but I do want people to have a copy, and I want it to be on the public record as part of the minutes. And then two things I want to bring out are following. The original budget for this PAC was $15.5 million bond and a $4 million private funding. That's $19.5 million. You just heard the number. 21, 23.8 million. I got 23.7, round of error. Now, if you look at this sheet, the actual construction cost of the PAC is $15.2 million. The original estimate was $11.5 million. I'm not going to go into how that happened. It's a lot of deception, $11.5 million. The fact is, that's way over budget. If you add the numbers, the cost of the PAC, including the $2 million acquisition of buildings, not $4 million, it was $2 million, is $22.5 million. That means just $7 million above the $15.5 million bond. $7 million in deficit building the Performance Arts Center. Then there is $1.2 million of endowment fund in the plan. That's why the 22.5 plus 1.2 is 23.7. That's the number presented by Icon, the architect. I don't know if you need the 1.2 million. We're very fortunate, we got speculative management that agreed to operate the... We're very fortunate, we got special management that agreed to operate the Performing Arts Center with no subsidy. But the condition was to make it 750 seats. Now, 750 seats is not the same as 550 seats of the original design, even though the stupidity of putting it on the second floor, that's gone. But it's not going to come for you to get 750 seats. So if you add the 1.2 million, there's another expense. There's utilities that have to be moved. Utility poles, transformers, you can't actually, you cannot electrocute people as they deliver props. And there has to be access, better access of Pearl Street. All that is costing $1 million to $2 million. If I estimate $1 million and add the 1.2 million for the endowment fund that's planned, the total of this project, the total budget is now $24.7 million. If you take out the 1.2 million, which I don't think you need, it's still 23.5 million. That's a far cry from the $19.5 million that's represented in the audience before you. It says 15.5 million, there's $4 million private funding. You're $9.2 million above the $15.5 million fund that you have. That's the only money you have. That's what this board of aldermen authorized. That's a lot of money. What if the national new market tax credits don't come through? Like the lady said before, this is a good year. She ought to know. Her husband runs a big operation. What if it doesn't come through in this year? What are you going, what's the backup plan? Now, all before, I'm not at all saying you ought to drop the project. You drop this project, that's another problem. You could probably sell the $2 million building, although I don't know if you're going to get $2 million for it. But the other sum cost, the architect. If you look at this sheet, the architect fees are 1.3 million. There's some addition. That's spent. That design is pretty much done. That design you see over there, it's a very nice design. It's not the design, I want a design tilted in to the building as opposed to that design. That's okay. The committee chose that design. It's a taller elevation and narrower change.
Mr. Tibum, can you summarize for us?
Yes. The point of it is, you're $9.2 million over. And if you don't get the new market tax credit, what is your alternate plan? Now, I'm saying, again, you're not going to drop this project, because you're going to lose $1.3 million for architect fees, that's gone, and about another $200,000 on pre-designed services. So you're down about 1.5 million. You drop this project, like some people recommend, you're out 1.5 million, plus the $2 million that you're stuck with. So you've got a lot of problems here. You have to stop thinking about Plan B. Plan B if you don't see the new market tax credits. Plan B if you don't raise 2.5 million. And it's probably, the Plan B is probably the people I'm looking at. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak in opposition?
Jordan Jackson, 59 Cheyenne Drive. I'd like to thank the mayor and the board of aldermen for listening to us tonight. I'll start off by saying I am opposed to this amendment, to that resolution, and for several reasons. You begin your, how shall I say, you begin your argument with the assumption that this facility will, in fact, generate or create a economic or an improved economic environment for the city of Nashua. So you begin with an assumption. Now, I've spent the last three or four days going through all of the history of our arts center here in Nashua. As you probably all know, it's been quite, quite an ordeal going back. We put it, we decided where it was going to be. We've had consultants over, I should be in the consulting business, I could have done pretty well here. But, but we've, we've gone over this time and time and time again. And, you know, as it was said, we were even thinking of putting it on top of the parking garages at one particular point, which I thought was pretty crazy, but nonetheless. We've suddenly come to the conclusion that this particular location is the ideal one. And quite frankly, I think that is also an assumption. One of the reasons I'm opposed to it, I'm not opposed, let me, let me clarify this. I'm not opposed to an arts center here in Nashua. I'm all for it, like many others. I'm opposed to this particular project. And in, inasmuch as that it doesn't do, and I'm surprised by this, that the, that the artists of this community seem to be for this, because it seems to totally ignore any support for the arts in Nashua. We're maybe importing artists to perform for us, where you, where if you have the wherewithal to buy a ticket, you can sit down and enjoy it. But it does not support, in my mind, the arts community. So you won't see potters there. You won't see sculptors. You won't see weavers. You won't see many of the different artists who are striving here in Nashua to be in any part of this. You know, if I can, if I can, I've got, you know, as you can imagine, a lot of paperwork from going over all this history. This is from, this is from Web 2015. This is one of the studies that was done. The first, and they gave us, they gave us three options. They said, "Partner with a regional college or university on the development of a new arts center." Okay, that's, that sounds pretty reasonable. Or, option two, develop a downtown, and here are the key words to me, meeting, events, and music center. So I, you know, I, I just don't see this as that sort of environment to encourage our local artists to be a part of this in any way. You know, I see it as a performing arts center, like I said, where you, on a Saturday night, you, you've got the wherewithal to pay 60 bucks or so for a ticket, then you go out to a restaurant, and you have a meal, and then you go home. You know, so the economics in that is, we're supporting a lot of restaurants, perhaps, and bars downtown. But, but I don't see it generating that sort of economic that we're trying to generate for the greater good of our citizens. And then, of course, the third option for them that they gave us was, develop an arts district anchored by renovating the Keith Auditorium and the Hunt Building. So then it occurs to me, what is the downtown? Well, if you look at a lot of these studies, the downtown is described as Main Street, starting at the Hunt Building, going south to City Hall, but continuing, if I may, beyond City Hall, further south, getting you quite, almost to the entire length of, of Main Street, if you want to look at it that way. But it goes considerably further, to incorporate these little bump outs, for example, the hospital, the medical center, this, that, and everything. And Elm Street, by the way, and Keith Auditorium. Already three minutes, I haven't even got started. I'm sorry. So anyway, I'm, I'm not, as I said, opposed to an arts center. I just don't think, I think we could do better, quite frankly. I think the projects that we have ongoing in the riverfront are fantastic. I think the idea of trying to get more of these millennials downtown is great. But I, I think we could, if we could just pause for a minute and do better, I would agree with this gentleman that said, put, continue that limitation. Thank God forever had the sense to do that. And, and extend it, perhaps, to give them what they think would be appropriate time to do that. But let's not jump, I hear, now I hear numbers like 22, we started out with 15. I think we were kind of sold of, I won't say a bill of goods, but we were told, and we think we had a turnout, the total, the total voters at that last election, there was only 16% of the total voters. And you, and so that means only 8% of the potential voters voted for this with a majority of 150 votes. What I feel is that you don't really have the confidence of all the citizens of Nashua to proceed on this. I would go slowly, and I'd go carefully. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak in opposition?
Hi, my name is Dave Vallad. I live at Wasn't Avenue in Nashville, lifelong resident as well. And I really have no up or down vote, but I do have a couple of questions for the funding campaign. Who is responsible for the C3? Not the fiscal agent, but the C3. Is that your organization?
We're, we're a committee of the...
Who are the officers of the C3?
Rich Lannan is the president.
Okay. My question then, maybe for Rich more, but maybe you can pass it along. March 15th is the filing deadline for the 990 PF that is the city. That's a matter of public record. And in that form, will be a list of donors called Schedule B attached. No social security numbers, just names and addresses, and the amounts donated. And that form is a matter of public record, can be found on the internet, actually. So the question of disclosure, a quiet phase, doesn't really exist. That information will probably be processed in about four to six weeks, and will be available at that time. So my question to you is, why wouldn't it be provided ahead of time? It will be obtained. If it's not willingly obtained, it can be requested, and under penalty, penalty for failure to provide, up to $10,000, it will be provided as a matter of public record, as required by law. If it's not filed, actually, the C3 actually risks losing its exemption for failure to file over a period of time. So there is a, there is a point that that information will be available and will be public, or other consequences will happen. So I don't know if that's the plan, is not to provide it, but it will be provided, one, one method or another. It will be made available. So I'm just curious why it seems as though there can be a quiet phase when the form with the required documentation will be a matter of public record?
So I am not a CPA. However, I have provided a CPA with all of the information for 2019. And that CPA has not asked, and they're, they do all of the 990s for several nonprofit organizations, they haven't asked for the names.
Well, that'll be interesting. See, I do have an advantage, unfortunately, why I ask this question. I was an auditor for the IRS for charities. So it's a typical, a typical document for me to request this information. So it's, it's not a difficult thing, which I did for 15 years. So it'll be interesting to see when the form does get filed. And then, of course, if it's missing substantially, if it's substantially missing information, it can be considered not filed. So that's another question.
I can assure you that we're going to give the CPA everything he requests.
All right. If you could pass that along, that'd be helpful.
I will.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak in opposition to this legislation?
Thank you. My name is Tom O'Loughlin. I'm on Nickel Lane. The way I understand this is there, this is not an extension, it's just the removal of a timeframe, which in essence gives an unlimited amount of time, and from what we can see, a relatively unlimited budget, to prepare to spend 15, 24 million dollars. Between November 17, November of 2017 and July of 2019, the nonprofit was informed. That started in August of 2019, which means any donations prior to that were through the city. Or through, how much was obtained between November 17, 27, sorry, November 2017 and July of 2019? How much was raised?
Is that a question?
If you'd like to answer it, Ms. Navatney?
Our fundraising began in August of 2019.
Okay. So it's something, okay, understood. So parents like myself, we experience that we don't have enough money for certain things. At Main Dunstable in Ward 5, we do not have enough money, nor are we providing any funding to replace a playground. 488 children, upwards of three times per day, can use this playground, but the parents must fund this. I don't see how we're here talking about this when things like that, when parents are forced to raise money for a playground that their children play on every day. We seem to have enough money to spend 60 million before overruns on a public works project, or 94 million before overruns on a school that we can't physically access, or 150,000 on a boat launch, or 65,000 for blinking crosswalks, or 40,000 on establishing an arts district. We seem to have enough money to renovate the Aldermanic Chamber. And with all those things that we have money for, I don't think we really do. I think that we're just saying that we do. The Performing Arts Center in 2017 passed by 151 votes. Since 2017, no fewer than 400 student voters have left this town. So it's safe to say that in 2020, we, it doesn't reflect 2017's voting viewpoint. We voted on the referendum that it's going to expire. And I firmly believe that if anything is going to change, it needs to go back to the voters. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak in opposition?
Deborah McLaughlin, 19 Salmon Brook Drive. And a lot of discussion has been discussed this evening in regards to the pros and cons of the center itself. But as you said, we're here to discuss about the deadline. And I own the company, The Renegade Leader Coaching and Consulting Group. I work with national and global enterprises that are facing change, ones that are, ones that are changing technology, ones that are facing mergers and acquisitions, or they're reacting to, you know, market or industry changes or compliance changes. All of them have to move quickly with change. What I did hear tonight, hear tonight was a list of long-term excuses, honestly, is how I heard it, that if any corporate office were to be having a boardroom of a list of excuses, I don't know if all those people would be there the next week. So what I'm asking is, yes, I understand that we are in the process of an amazing thing, however, and there were, there is some work still to be done. But what I do ask is, as you cast your vote, and as you're thinking about this, is not to have an open deadline. What is realistic? What is your commitment back to the people of a deadline, so that everyone does the work that's necessary to achieve this goal?
Is there anyone else that would like to be heard in opposition?
Beth Scare, East Hobart Street. I heard the mayor say this project was well thought out. If it was, why didn't you raise the $4 million? We've already proven that this project was poorly conceived and poorly managed. And I want to thank my alderman, June Karen, for pledging to vote against this amendment. And I hope the rest of you can do that as well. We're already, the mayor's already said, we're going to see property taxes going up because of the health care costs, and we can't afford this. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to be heard in opposition? Seeing none, is there anyone else that would like to now be heard in favor?
Good evening. Rich Lannan, 11 McGrath Road in Pelham. I live in Pelham, but my office has been in Nashua for about 42 years. Own property downtown. And I'm a gun for punishment, and I'm pretty much on every single PAC meet, committee since its inception. I was, started with the Duncan Webb study. I was asked to be on a study group to discuss and look into starting a performing arts center. And there was, it was a good group. There was some aldermen involved. It was public involved. It was a good, and I learned a lot at that. And that's when we vetted out several different consultants, and Duncan Webb was, was hired. One thing, just for the people who don't know, at that point, when that study was started, you know, we gave them some criteria, what we really want. What was our wish list? And the wish list was obviously Performing Arts Center. At the time, the symphony, you know, was requesting if we could house them 1,500-foot theater. And the two biggest parts of that, beyond cost, which is obviously a very important thing, was, can Nashua support a performing arts center? We asked all of the people that we, we talked to that was interviewing to be, being our consultants, including Duncan Webb. All these people that were unbiased, because they were not... All these people that were unbiased because they were not going to build this. So they pretty much said, half the time, we come back and say, sorry folks, we have bad news, you can't support it. So that was good to hear from all of them, and Duncan Webb really stressed that, that half the time, he comes back and he hates walking into a room and giving the bad news. So it wasn't until far into his study, well along, and it was all, it was talked about, new theaters built on Spring Street, on High Street, renovating Keith, renovating Court Street, 201 Main Street wasn't on the radar because Alex Shue was there. So it wasn't until far into that project consultant stage when Alex Shue decided to move and that became available. So that was two different time periods. But when he came back, two things that I remember clearly was, I have good news and bad news. Good news is, I think Nashua can definitely support it and gave us all the reasons why, but probably more with like 500 or 550 seats at that time. But that's way before there was a steering committee, or a campaign committee, or any other committee. It was purely a, kind of a feasibility committee out to see what can Nashua support. So from then, eventually, fast forwarding, also, obviously, we eventually came before the Board of Aldermen a couple of years ago. And when the Board of Aldermen finally, you know, did the vote, I know there was no vote, it went to the public, the majority of the public voted, obviously, in favor. And when it came back for the board, we, there was nobody of that committee at that time that said, don't worry, you know, we're going to raise $4 million and we're going to do it in two years. That was imposed by members of that Board of Aldermen at that time. It was an arbitrary number saying, we want $4 million raised. And it was arbitrary to say, we'll give it two years. Nobody asked for that. So it wasn't like, folks, we need $4 million, we're going to raise $4 million, give us two years, it'll be done. There was nobody, because there wasn't really a committee even at that point that was even asking for that. It wasn't until that vote was done that the steering committee was formed, and the work really started. Going, again, fast forwarding a little bit, because I've been involved in the steering committee, I'm on the Capitol Campaign Committee, and as Deb said earlier, I am the president of the newly formed 501(c)(3). I will say, some people I knew already, and a lot of people I've gotten to know that I've never known before. And there were people that are here tonight and spoke, like Mark Thayer and Lindsay, that I never knew before, and very impressed with all three committees of the knowledge in what, and very diverse, lot of different opinions, lot of knowledge came out of those. And all three committees have worked extremely hard, lot of hours, and whether there was a $4 million amount, whether you eliminate the $4 million altogether, or whatever number or time period, I can assure the public and assure this board, our committee that we meet originally was once or twice a month, and we're literally meeting weekly. And, you know, Deb and I, and Miralou, and a few other people that are here on the Capitol Campaign Committee, I mean, there's not a day go by that there's not conversations, and there's not a day go by that one of us, if not multiple, many of us, that are meeting with potential donors. Being around, like I said, for about 40 years in Nashua, I've gotten to know a lot of people in business, and made a lot of friends, and I have never had one person that I've talked to about donating to this have said no. And I've talked to a lot of people. I've been successful in getting donations so far, and a lot of them, like Deb has explained thoroughly, it's a big number, especially we're talking five, six, and seven figures. It takes time for some of these businesses and people to make decisions. And again, I haven't had a no yet. It's either been yes, done, or it's in the process. And I am very confident that we're going to raise, again, as Deb has said, with two and a half million plus, and just a couple of quick clarifications. Because I probably had a 20-minute thing, and thank God that Mayor Donchess already said most of the things that I was going to say earlier, so I totally turned direction of what I just said. And I'll finish up here. As far as the Bank America, Bank America, I know it was reported that it was like, it was, it was, I'm trying to think of the word.
Right.
Yeah, it was, it was $250,000, and there was conditions put on that and everything. That's not accurate. Basically, the $250,000, we already have half of it. It's already been given. The other half, I think, is next year. So that has been committed, and the condition is, I think they even mentioned a condition, the condition is no different than if somebody in here donated the $5,000, which is, you know, a 10, 15, $25,000. There's not a written condition, and they did not give us any written conditions. The condition is in the contract. If, for whatever reason, unfortunately, this thing fails, you get your money back. So the only condition, which is not a written condition, is if we do give them the $250,000 back, just like everybody else gets their 10, 25, or 50. So there's some misconceptions out there in that regard, and all I can say is, I would love, you know, we're going to continue no matter what circumstances are put on us, but not having the time is just, we just don't see why there was ever a timetable to begin with. It's there, and we would, I encourage you to vote to eliminate that. But the committee will continue no matter what is done. The committee is going to continue working hard, and I assure you, this will get done. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor of this legislation? Seeing none, is there any, oh. A late shy speaker.
Shy.
My name is Paul Shea. I'm the Executive Director of Great American Downtown. We have a mission centered around economic and cultural vibrancy here in our downtown, which of course impacts the broader community. I'm also a resident of Nashua. I live in French Hill since 2009. We've lived there on Toll Street. And on a personal level, I am very enthusiastic about this project, but I also came this evening to convey the support of our full Board of Directors. The meeting has gone on long, and I've already sent you a formal letter, kind of conveying that, and why we feel that we are in support of lifting the time limitation, so that the work can continue to the success of this project. And I wanted to come up to reiterate that simply. Couple important items to correct that have been discussed tonight. In terms of filing, we file annually our taxes with the state of New Hampshire, there's a threshold of $500,000. We've looked at this because our organization has continued to grow the scope of our programming, and thus our budget. And it is a threshold of $500,000 when you get into nitty-gritty detail work that needs to be submitted. The simple 990 filing with the state of New Hampshire, along with a form certifying that that information is accurate, is generally the practice for lower revenue operations and where, you know, much of the activity is taking place this year. I cannot imagine that the threshold was exceeded last year. So another item, we've talked about the, the scope, audience size that was recommended in terms of the project by the Web Consulting Group. The executive summary of the report does actually outline a 500 to 700-person space. And so pushing the envelope to a 750,000 space helps to maximize this investment and in conjunction with feedback from the operator. It's a good move. It was touched upon this evening, the question of whether or not the, the space will be flexible and meet the recommendations of the consulting group to be a convention and event space. This design continues to incorporate the recommendation of the Web Group, which calls for a flexible floor plan on the lower level with telescopic seating. I was very happy to get to kind of test out those chairs yesterday at 201 Main Street, lots of great options. But with that, this design continues to meet that recommendation of the group. It's also been touched upon tonight, the extent to which the city of Nashua has followed through with some of the other recommendations, and met the needs of the broad artist community. And I'm very happy to see the establishment of a set of artist studios at Court Street, attention and investment in the Court Street facility to the benefit of the users there, and a great deal of consideration when looking at the future of Keith Auditorium. Again, we are in favor of this, and we appreciate all the hard work that's gone into it, and thank you all.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor of this legislation? Seeing none, anyone, again, wishes to speak in opposition to this legislation?
Ken Siegel, 224 Parker Street, Lowell. This will be less than 60 seconds, Mr. Chairman. Very quickly, I was the one that came up with the two-year threshold. I'm fairly confident that I know where it came from, so I have to take issue with Mr. Lannan's characterization that implied that it's somehow capricious or arbitrary. It was neither, and it was based on a discussion that I had, as I said before. Again, reiterate, I believe you should keep some sort of deadline in there. Separate from that, I believe that to solve the problem of the alderman being unaware of the funding, I would suggest to the President, Alderman Wilsher, go into closed session. We've done it a million times, go into closed session, then you can provide all the information necessary, the aldermen are bound to secrecy, then you can make an intelligent vote. And I frankly wouldn't vote on anything of this magnitude without having a fairly clear-cut idea of what the funding situation is. Thank you.
Anyone else wants to speak in opposition?
Mike Susi, 3 Roseanne Circle. I'm going to be, take less time than my former alderman friend, Ken Siegel. I'm absolutely in favor, the closed session. Please do it. You'll have the facts that you need.
Lori Ordolano, Berkeley Street. I'll be quick as well. A lot of interesting information came out here tonight, a lot of timelines and frames. I would request that in the future, you have a spec sheet or a document that's on the table for the public, that shows where we started and where we are now, with a breakdown of the finances that have gone into this project. I mentioned that before when we did the school project, and I think we are missing a lot of information as the public to be able to track what's going on. Some of us can't dig it all up ourselves, and we're busy, and it would be super helpful if you would provide that tracking mechanism. Thank you.
Anyone else that wants to speak in opposition?
Karen Bill, 95 Parnell Place, Nashua. I don't know how you can allow this to go forward as a governing body, that, how you could even vote to extend it. Because it was voted on with 155 people, the vote won by 155. You know, there were 551 people in that election that did not vote on Resolution Number 2. I did hours worth of homework investigating this. 551 people didn't even vote on Resolution Number 2. Why? I had to ask myself, why? And you read it, and, you know, you might be a person that says, I don't get this, or I'm a little older, or I'll never go to the Performing Arts Center. I have not voted on a resolution before because I didn't understand the wording. And I'm an intelligent individual. So 551 registered voters didn't even answer the question. And the people that voted in favor were, again, led to believe there was $4 million bucks out there, and in two years, it could be done. It didn't happen. You can't have a moving target of, we're just going to move it, we're going to move it, we're going to move it. Are you going to do two more years? Are you going to do three years? Because nobody's going to want an open-ended end to the money. And the money! The money! How much more money? This guy, every meeting, with a calculator. I don't think we have all the information by far. I don't think we have accurate information by far. I don't think we have a true cost by far. I don't care if you have 30 people in line to donate, they're in line. The money's not on the table. You cannot have this go forward. I think that you, I don't know your name, let the voters decide. I think, how can you do anything but with a new budget, with a firm deadline, and with reality? Because shame on, shame on us for even going forward, not knowing what had to be done until a year, year and a half in. It doesn't fly. Thank you.
Anyone else that wants to speak in opposition?
I didn't get to add these, a couple of points here. And this comes directly from what we're speaking of this evening, and this is the study that was done by Full Circle, Capitol Campaign Feasibility Study. And just several comments in this that popped out, because they, they, they used as the basis, they interviewed, I think it was like 30 to 35, so leading, key word, leading members of the community, business, so forth and so on. And then they interviewed them about what they thought this whole process was going to look. And so these things popped out, and a quote right from it, "In terms of concern, two themes, as well as others, rise to the top. There is a deep distrust of the city's ability to manage the project, and if it's not done right, it will fail." And secondly, skepticism was voiced by, skepticism voiced by 10%, stated the city should not be investing public money, and the project cost is way too high." That's, that's by their consultant. And then there's other concerns as well. Again, as I, as I said, the deep distrust of the city and inability to do it, and it's not done right, and unfortunately, I can't find the other pages right now. But if you go back and review this, you'll, you'll see all, all of these comments that were raised by these 35 or 30 so far individuals.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak in opposition? Seeing no one in opposition?
Matthew Plant, 17 Robie Street. I'm just speaking for, solely for myself this evening. I had some notes, but I'll be a lot more brief. I wonder if we went back to those voters who voted in favor of this, and explained to them that the cost increased from 15-something million to 20-something million, and the public portion of it decreased from four to two and a half, that we're hearing tonight, how they would vote. I'm thinking probably that fewer people would vote in favor, just in general. The other thing is, there's a lot of discussion about this activity, about all the activity with this, all out of work, and a lot of meetings and committees. And in my years in corporate life, we were cautioned that activity is nice, but they shouldn't be confused with results. Thank you.
Anyone else want to speak in opposition? Seeing no one, Alderman Lopez, are you still on the line?
No, he's not here.
He wasn't there at all.
He never has been?
No.
Do I hear a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
The motion is to adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed? We're adjourned at 9:29.